A determination of legal notice. You guys take intrude on your conversation, but we're starting.
What's your name?
Hello.
All items have been properly noticed.
Okay. Do we have a director's report?
Yes, Madam Chair. Members of the Planning Commission, good morning. Nash Gonzalez. First of all, on June 5th, 2017, the Board adopted the floodplain ordinance that the Planning Commission previously had reviewed and commented on. That ordinance has been transmitted to FEMA, and FEMA has accepted the ordinance and basically has said that we're good to go. So the next steps is that we will be processing an LCP amendment so that the ordinance becomes fully applicable to the coastal zone as well. I've already had preliminary conversations with the Coastal Commission, and one of the things that they're looking at is that the county considers sea level rise as well. So what I'm basically saying to the Coastal Commission is that's fine. The ordinance is really not the place for that to happen. It's really in the LCP document itself, a policy or two dealing with that. So we're still going to be trying to work out those details. So the Coastal Commission right now is working on transmitting the final documents to the county for the Mendocino Town Plan, which again, I'll segue into that. On June 8th, uh, June 9th, the Coastal Commission certified the Mendocino Town Plan. And that happened up in Arcata, and staff from the county as well as Supervisor Hamburg were there to provide testimony, and as well as members of the public. And so after about an hour of discussion, they certified the town plan. And so at this point, we are waiting their final documents, any last minute changes and so on. That'll come back to the Planning Commission, or excuse me, that'll come back to the county. We'll bring that forth to the Board. And there were just a couple of items that the Coastal Commission did not agree with with the county. And one of them was the, I'll say, the legitimization or legalization of the vacation home rentals in the town of Mendocino. So basically, what we're looking at is the possibility of maybe using an entitlement process, an LCP amendment, not an amendment, but a CDP process to address those, and then perhaps maybe group them all in. So that'll, that'll be to be determined. But at least that's one more milestone that we've got taken care of is the Mendocino Town Plan after five years, I think. So, and then currently, we're working on an ordinance amendment to Chapter 2164 as it pertains to the second residential units. This would allow for the new changes in state law dealing with accessory residential units. And basically, in essence, this would further relax the standards for accessory units. So they're not necessarily called second units anymore. They're now going to be called accessory residential units now. And so I'm finding that in various other places in California, they're reducing things like parking and square footage requirements and so on. Our second unit ordinance has been much more relaxed than many others in the state. And I only see minor tweaking to the ordinance, again, as it pertains to parking and things as such. But what that is, is basically at the direction of the Board, we've been asked to look at this as well, including second units in the coastal zone. So we'll be having further discussion with the Coastal Commission on that because the Coastal Commission did put out a memo several weeks ago to counties and cities as far as units in the coastal zone. And what basically it says is they recognize the changes in the law, but they still have certain restrictions on second units. And one of the issues that we need to look at is the addition of additional units in the coastal zone may trigger the Highway 1 capacity study to be looked at again. So again, I'll, as we get closer and closer to doing that in the coastal zone, I'll go ahead and provide more updates on that. But again, what will be coming would be the first phase, which would be the changes to the inland ordinance. We have, since we've last met, we've had some staffing changes. We have, in essence, hired five new building inspectors, two new planners, one here in Ukiah, and an extra help planner in Fort Bragg. We've also lost a planner in Fort Bragg. That was Robert LaPorte, who left maybe three weeks ago. We've brought on two new code enforcement officers. And we were slated to have a code enforcement officer start this week in Fort Bragg, which would have been our third one, but this person at the 11th hour decided that the move from Arizona to Fort Bragg wasn't feasible. Let's see, as far as applications, we're basically taking in roughly 300 building permit applications a month. Just to give you an idea of what came in, in the month of June, is we took in 14 use permits, 13 CDPs, 25 admin permits, 17 boundary line adjustments in June. And I think a lot of it was due to the fact that fees have been increasing or were to increase on July 1st, so we had a sudden rush in applications. We accomplished 524 building inspections in the month of June as well. Have processed 38 business licenses. And the other thing I wanted to let the Planning Commission know is that the Board of Supervisors also extended the building permit amnesty to the end of the year. We are currently recruiting for a building official. And let's see, something that the Planning Commission would be interested in is that the Board of Supervisors right now is currently working on a proclamation for Commissioner Little.
Good.
And that would conclude my director's report.
We have one question. Does the Coastal Commission have any maps that this commission could look at projecting any sea level rise impacts in our county?
I'll have to look into that. One of my concerns is that as we start looking at sea level rise, a lot of that would come back to the county to do analysis because I've talked to other counties and the ones that have done more extensive work on sea level rise, they've either gone after grants or they've been working with FEMA to try to do sea level rise analysis. And I know the Coastal Commission has been in other areas studying this. So that's part of my discussions to have with the Coastal Commission is what available resources do they have as well?
Yeah, I mean, I don't necessarily think we should launch into investigating that here in the county, but if they have something, I would be interested in being able to look at something on a website. So just kind of get a feel for what they think is coming down the pike. I'm sure it is pretty early days for any mapping or anything, but it would be interesting.
One of the things that the commission staff indicated to me is that the Coastal Commission itself is really interested in sea level rise, and any opportunity that they have, they're asking the jurisdictions to look at sea level rise. But part of the floodplain ordinance process is what we ended up doing is taking the floodplain ordinance in the coastal zone and in the inland area and combining them and then moving them into Chapter 22 as opposed to having it rest in Chapter 20. So that it basically applies to the entire county and not having two separate ordinances to go back and forth, which FEMA was very glad that we did that because it's really one ordinance. But again, as I started to talk to the Coastal Commission about this process, they were very interested in us taking a look at sea level rise. And my comment to them was the ordinance-
Send over anything you've got.
Yeah. Anything, any information you've got. We don't have the resources to generate such studies, and they could be very extensive. But whatever they've got, we would look at, and we could incorporate those into the LCP. And again, as I've mentioned, those are where the sea level rise issues would best rest is in the LCP document and not necessarily in the ordinance. Because again, the ordinance basically deals with the floodplain standards as put forth by FEMA and not necessarily sea level rise. And I've had the discussions with FEMA, and FEMA basically says we can go ahead and make the ordinance much more restrictive than the minimums that they require, and they will work with us as well.
Chairman? So you were talking about second units, and where you've got CCNRs, and if we relax our restrictions on second units, what takes precedence?
Well, the CCNRs are private restrictions, and even though we may relax our standards, whether it's a homeowners association or property owners, they can still enforce their CCNRs.
Okay, so they would actually take precedence. If they didn't allow second units, then regardless of what the county-
Correct.
Okay.
Plus, by relaxing the standards, we can further tell HCD the next time we do a housing element update that we have further removed obstacles for providing housing.
Yes. Yeah, I had a couple of questions. I guess the first one is, do you know anything about the status? And I realize this comes from the Board, filling the District III Commissioner's position.
I don't as of this date. I know that the Third District Supervisor has been asked to look into this, and maybe, Adrian, you-
I do, I, excuse me, good morning Commissioners, Adrian Thompson. I received a phone call from Allison Purnell, I believe, who should be appointed on July 11th by the Board to be the new Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. And do you know where, is she from the Lightenville area, or do you know?
I believe so. I think she's part of LMAC, but I'm not positive. I know I'm familiar with the name, but I haven't spoken to her yet.
Okay.
But she said she'd be appointed on July 11th, so assuming we can get an August meeting together, she'll be here in August.
Thank you, Adrian.
Thanks.
And I had one other question. Nash, you mentioned code enforcement officers, and I guess there was one physician that was supposedly filled, but now is it filled on the coast? So are the other, I think you mentioned three, so are the other two in the Ukiah area or the inland area?
The other two are in the inland area, and right now, what's happening is we still have a code enforcement officer from Ukiah going over to Fort Bragg right now to address coastal issues.
And one of them I know I met, he was retired, I believe, Ukiah PD person. Is he still working for the Planning Department or?
Yes, that would be Brian, and he's still. So in addition to Brian, we have two that just recently started within the last two weeks.
We'll hope they stick around.
We hope, we hope.
Fewer than anyone, I'm sure. Thank you.
Any other questions for the Director? We have matters from the public now. This is a chance for people to address us. I see no members in the public. I understand the regular calendar is modified somewhat today?
Yes, Madam Chair. We actually had four items on the agenda. Item 6B, which is a minor subdivision for Timothy and Candy Slotty, has been pulled, and that is to come back to you in August. And then item 6D, which is the Mendocino Redwood Company use permit renewal, that has been pulled at the request of the applicant's engineer. And so it's anticipated that these two items would come back to the Planning Commission in August.
Okay. So the consent calendar has no items. We will move on to the regular calendar, and we will begin with A 2007-001, 2017-001 Marietta Vineyards LLC.
Good morning Commissioners, Russ Ford, Planning and Building Services. So our first project this morning is an application for a new Williamson Act contract, case number 8201701 for Marietta Vineyards LLC. The property is in Hopland here, and I'll just give you a quick abstract of the project. So Marietta Vineyards acquired the property in 2004. It shows a long history of ag use. It's had vines for a long time. There was a history of use permits for, you know, farm labor structures, some BLAs and other associated permits. In 2014, Marietta Vineyards applied for a three lot minor subdivision, which was approved early this year. I believe the map was recorded in January, which created three lots. This is the current configuration of the third lot, which is 133.64 acres per that map. Marietta Vineyards is now applying for a Williamson Act contract on this parcel, just this parcel. It's currently planted vines. Per the financial statement provided by the applicant, the vines easily meet the threshold for the Williamson Act contract, and the Department recommends approval.
Any time answer questions?
I'm good.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Well, I would move approval.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this application. Let's have a quick vote.
Commissioner Warner?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Gorman?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall? Yes. Page 60. Next up is U 2016-005, State of California.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, this is a coastal development use permit to allow for the installation and upgrade of radio equipment within the existing structure referred to as the oil house and an attached antenna to the existing pole outside of the oil house at the Point Cabrillo Light Station State Historic Park. This application is submitted by the California Department of Transportation. Property owner is the State of California Department of Parks and Recreation. Property is located in the coastal zone, three miles north of the town of Mendocino, lying at the terminus of the Lighthouse Road. And as indicated, this is a request to do some upgrades to the radio equipment at the Point Cabrillo Light Station. The existing radio system no longer meets the industry standards and needs to be upgraded. One of the proposals is the maximum height of the new antenna would be 25 feet. And the Department of Transportation has indicated to staff that for safety reasons, basically to the employees that utilize the radio system, that's necessary to upgrade the system to the 800 megahertz frequency. And this would allow for radio coverage along State Route 1. The subject property is approximately 34 acres in area and is located west of Highway 1, approximately three miles north of the town of Mendocino. The existing development includes the lighthouse, State Historic Park, the gift shop, and the Point Cabrillo Light Station, which consists of a water tower, tent structures, and a tower signal building, and three single-family dwellings, three storage buildings, and a pump house, and the oil house. The radio equipment would be housed within the existing building. So in essence, the proposal is just to add an antenna to the existing pole outside. Staff has analyzed the site and noted that there is environmental sensitive habitat area within the property, but again, none of that will be affected by the proposed project since everything is to be housed within that structure. The property is classified as open space by the County General Plan, and the project is consistent with the open space classification. I would direct your attention to page five of the staff report under the development standards. There is a requirement for 16 feet for minor impact utilities. The proposal is 25 feet, however, 20.444025, which is the height exceptions, states that the radio and television antenna and similar utility structures and necessary mechanical pertinences may be built and used to a height not more than 25 feet above the height limit established for the district in which the structures are located. Again, what's being proposed is a 25-foot radio antenna to be used by Caltrans. So staff has found that the proposal is consistent with the development and land use standards in the open space district and meets the requirements. As far as visual resources, the project is located in a highly scenic area. However, since the upgraded radio equipment would be installed within the existing oil house and the new antenna attached the existing pole outside of the oil house, any impacts are considered minimal. As far as in Sequo related, the project is considered categorically exempt from Sequo under Class 1 because this is an existing facility. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the project. And again, this is an item that would normally have been presented by Mr. Kinzer, but he is out ill today and has asked that I go ahead and present this on his behalf. So with that, that would conclude my presentation, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Commissioner Warner? Yeah, I think the report is very well done. It's thorough.
Yes.
And this is such an unusual property with unusual mix of uses there. But my only concern would be the visual.
Mm-hmm.
And yet, for its importance, I think it's minor. So it would certainly, in my opinion, should be approved. Nelson?
Yes, I had a question. It says it's used for public and Caltrans employee communication safety, so I wondered about the public safety. And part of that, I'm, I guess I'm thinking about, it seems like whenever we have antennas and things, we like for cellphone towers, for instance. We require that they leave space for additional cellphones or communication facilities. So not that I want to see a cellphone tower there, and I guess my first question is, is there cellphone service there? And I meant to get out there to see. I don't know if you know Molly or not.
I stayed in the guesthouse once, but I didn't use a cellphone. But I think the people that were with me did.
Uh-huh.
I know from, from personal experience, it's very sketchy in that area as well, especially going through Mendocino.
And have to lean out over the headlands.
Yeah. Because I've been down at Big River on the beach and have had good service. I've been out at the headlands and had good service, but then as you move north, it's a little sketchy going through Russian Gulch, and then you somehow get cell service once you're at the roundabout. And that's just been my personal experience because as I drive over and have hands-free, because again, I would never talk on the cellphone while driving.
No, no, no.
I've actually lost calls in that area. But again, one of the reasons that this antenna is being proposed is that Caltrans utilizes radio service up and down the coast for the public good. If there's an accident or if there's any roadwork that's happening, they need to communicate by radio because again, the cell service is rather sketchy. And so that is the purpose of the antenna for, and as Caltrans indicated, it's for public safety because they're typically addressing the safety of the public.
So I guess my question then is, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. So shouldn't we require that they also give space on the antenna for other uses?
We could. I mean, that pole may be limited to the structure itself of what it can do because it looks like there's a, I'll call it a whip type of antenna. And usually, when you have colocation, you have structures that may be able to handle the additional loads and additional antenna that may go up. Again, from what I see here, the pole may be limited in what it can do. It might be able to accommodate other types of antennas, but the more antennas you start putting on there, the more of a visual issue it becomes.
And it might start sailing right on the headlands.
Yeah, I understand that. I just, you know, have a little bit of concern about.
And I'm a big fan of colocation. Instead of putting in new towers, you want to go ahead and utilize what's there.
And maybe in the future, they'll have them smaller or something where something would be able to work there. Just wanted to bring it to the attention of you.
Sure.
That's it. Thank you.
But yeah, I would think the look of a microwave dish or something would not be very appropriate there.
Oh, yeah.
And I think state parks has policies against citing cellphones along the bluffs.
Okay.
In fact, they may, their policy may include all of the state parks, and I'm not sure I agree with that. I think there might be some spots in state parks that might be appropriate, but I wouldn't think this was one.
Okay.
Pretty visual. Yeah.
Molly covered my point.
Any other questions for staff? The State is clearly not here, so.
Well, if you're ready for a motion.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission approve the coastal, the use permit and grant the development use permit for the project as proposed by the applicant based on the facts and findings and subject to the conditions of approval, which are two pages at the back and the two pages of the actual resolution.
Second.
Let's take a vote.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Gorman?
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Gorman?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Gorman?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Gorman?
Yes.
Okay. Question is approved, 60.
Okay. Sorry, I got y'all out of bed.
Yeah, moving right along.
We have next matters from staff, if any.
There are none, Madam Chair.
Okay. Matters from commission, if any. Well, I would need to announce that if we have a second meeting in August, I will not be available. I don't know if we know the August dates yet.
Adrian's not here, but at last recollection, it looks like we'll only have the one on the 17th, 18th?
I'm not sure yet.
Yeah, it's still, we've got one, we've got one, possibly two items that may be ready to go for the second meeting. We do know that there will not be a first meeting.
Okay.
But for the second meeting in August.
Would take care of these ones we just-
Yes.
-pulled from this agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
In fact, it looks like item 6B is slated to go to the second meeting in August.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to go back to this Slotty-
Item?
Item, thank you, that we, that we put off or continued. And I'd like staff to consider the agricultural, hmm.
Impact.
The, well, normally, there's the, and I thought about it this morning, and now I've drawn a blank, the right-to-farm ordinance.
Right-to-farm.
Because there's a vineyard right next to it.
Mm-hmm.
Do you think that a subdivision would affect the farm?
Well, anytime you put more houses near a vineyard, there's a possibility of conflict of interest with dusting and noise, and that's what the egg, or right-to-farm ordinance is all about.
Yeah, it's an ordinance-
Just to warn potential-
To avoid potential conflict- To avoid potential conflicts with the new homes being located near agricultural uses. And again, this ordinance has been on the books for a number of years. It really relates to who was there first. And so, as people start moving in near agricultural uses, they have to understand that the ag use is there, and they have to basically accept what's there.
I only ask because there are existing buildings on the property.
Mm-hmm. But again, when you start looking at additional parcels, you also have the possibility of second units being built on properties that are subdivided.
And suddenly, there's a neighborhood there.
Mm-hmm.
So, just to follow up on that question, is that, I know that, I recall many times when we've actually made notations on parcel maps for various restrictions. And I'm wondering if this, the right to farm ordinance is something that is noted.
Yes, it is.
I think about out-of-towners who might not really get that.
If this were a parcel map, it would be noted on the parcel map. If it's a unilateral agreement, it would be noted in the unilateral agreement. So, it becomes part of the conditions that are recorded with the subdivision.
I never worry about the first generation, but you think three sales down the line, if it's not on there, it could be a problem.
And it is. You know, what tends to happen is that the people that first move in, they realize, I've got, I've got a situation where I'm located near ag, and they understand. But like you said, two or three sales later, people then begin to complain about the inconveniences or the odors or whatever it may be that the ag use tends to generate. And that's the reason why we have the right to farm ordinance, is to address these things.
Yeah, it seems like that's up to, something needs to be disclosed by the seller too, I think legally, but.
It typically is, but from what I understand, it's mostly people don't read their title documents. And we usually end up getting complaints about that. And we have to point them to the information that was provided to them. I mean, I hear this all the time, is that people sign documents when they buy a home. They obtain the documents, and they never really read them until they're inconvenienced in some way. And then they're contacting the realtor, they're contacting their title company, and they're being told it was right there from day one. They signed it.
That's why you want a good realtor, who brings those things to your attention.
Mm-hmm.
And the other thing, I apologize, I wanted to go over the dates for the meetings. Do we not then have a meeting on July twentieth?
Uh, no.
Okay. And in August, we.
In August, it looks like the first meeting in August is not going to happen. It looks like the second one.
Okay. So, that would be on the seventeenth.
Victoria, I don't know if you want to weigh in on this, but. Yeah.
We're not sure. We're waiting on Mary Lynn for the third.
But Victoria, it was very nice to receive the cancellation agenda, because that let people know. That was really helpful. So, I appreciate that.
Let's just keep August open right now as a possibility, because Mary Lynn is out on vacation. She won't be back until the seventeenth. And I was making the assumption that, based on the staff reports that may need to be re-reviewed and so on, may not make it in time, because I think some of these have to be reviewed and approved by the end of this week. But I do have one already, which is on my desk, is the one for the subdivision, the slotty subdivision. Staff has completed that one, so it just needs me to review it. So, one thought was that if we have enough items, then we can move forward with the third. If we don't, then we would push back to the seventh, to the eighteenth. But again, we'll keep that open, and we'll advise the commission.
Okay.
So, would the second meeting, I think I've got the right month, would it be the thirty-first? Oh, the second meeting is the seventeenth? Okay.
So, we're still.
If you're planning on going away for the solar eclipse, you may not be around.
What day is the solar eclipse?
No, it's. It's the following.
It's the twenty-first.
Sunday.
Twenty-first or twenty-second of August.
I'm going up to Casper, Wyoming for that. It's going to be fun.
Well, I'm going to Silverton, Oregon.
You're a little closer.
The sun is not.
So, we're leaving the third as a possibility. I'm sorry.
We're leaving all of August right now as a possibility until Mary Lynn gets back, as I've been instructed by Victoria.
But it sounds like we will have a much better quorum if we do it the first meet, uh, the first opportunity in August. It sounds like our stargazers are going to.
Well, no, I'm not leaving till the nineteenth.
Oh, okay.
I don't know when Molly's leaving.
I think the Wednesday before.
Okay.
We're just going to do a long road trip.
Yeah, okay.
Does that take care of matters from commission?
Okay, we do have the approval of the January nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, planning commission minutes.
I submitted corrections, but I did have just one, which most of them were very minor, but I was a little confused on page fifteen. About two-thirds of the way down where it begins, Commissioner Nelson made a motion to suggest. And after that paragraph, it says discussion when in future. And I didn't know what that, what that pertained to.
I had that too.
Page fifteen, about two-thirds of the way down. I had sent that in an email, which I know you and Adrian had both reviewed, but I just, like I say, most of those were minor. But that one, kind of like, oh, okay, what does that mean?
I don't remember.
I don't really remember.
I don't either.
Maybe we should just strike discussion when in future. Does that work for you?
It works for me, yeah. I just.
That'd be a good idea.
And then, let's see, I did want to go back to, I'm going to change your media parcel to. On page two, and I, I'm hoping that these are corrected, but about, right in the middle where it begins, Commissioner Ogilvy noted several other typos. And then, the last sentence says, Commissioner Ogilvy noted that she had visited the site. But I wanted it clarified that I did meet with the applicant at the site. So, I recommended that be changed to Commissioner Ogilvy noted she had met with the applicant at the site. Wanted it known that I did meet with the applicant. And the others, they say, they were pretty minor. I'll also change, oh, and then, sorry. I think in the motion on page five, the first paragraph, originally, that was noted, the location was noted to be on the south side, when it was actually southwest. And Mr. Dostelec stated that was southwest. So, I didn't know when we, when I made the motion, it did correct a typographical error to twenty-six feet, but it didn't change the remainder parcel to the southwest, not the south. And I don't know if that was part of the motion or not. It's probably not that important, but you know me. I've been here long enough. I'm kind of picky about those things.
We think this is a good thing.
Well, thank you. And I did, I've been in contact with Adrian, so I think those are probably corrected. But I'm just bringing those to the attention of the commissioners.
I had a few.
Yes.
On page six, the third paragraph from the bottom. Mrs. Hunt stated that our two area that would be impacted by the requirement was in Fort Bragg. It isn't actually in Fort Bragg. It's in the area near Fort Bragg, since the city limits of Fort Bragg would preclude these regulations applying. So, if we could add in the area near Fort Bragg, it would be more clear. And then, page eleven, the third paragraph, Chair Holtkamp asked, and I think we need the word if, a neighborhood could conduct a water assessment to lower the cost. And in the next sentence, I imagine that Marilyn got this in her email, but to take the A off forma and make it two separate words. And then, one last one on page fifteen.
Before we go from page eleven, there were a couple others there, just to bring to your attention. The second one, Commissioner Hall, asked if it would be possible to host workshops for applicants to attend and gain and, take the D off of and, it should be and understanding. And then, one, two, three, four, five. And then, on the fifth paragraph, Commissioner Nelson noted that there seemed to be, the word there is spelled incorrectly. It should be T H E R E. And I'm not even going to go over the minor one. It's only a comma. Thank you, Molly. Go ahead.
Sure. So, page fifteen, and this is a little more complicated, but maybe a little more important. The last sentence before making the motion says, "The commission agreed they would like a sunset clause to remove cultivation from all residential zonings within two years." I don't recall that we did that for all residential zonings, fives and tens?
Yeah.
Is that the way you remember it, commissioners?
Don't remember.
I know. I remember the fives, not the tens.
Well, wouldn't it be implied that it would be the zonings where we eliminated it only?
But I think if we say all residential zonings, it should be what we really said, and I don't think it was all. I think it was our five and lower, not tens.
Yeah, maybe the tape needs to be listened to again for that statement, to be sure it's accurate.
Whether the board contention, contention was to be five or ten.
We discussed that.
Unfortunately, it's so long ago, I don't remember.
Cultivation in rural districts. And I'm wondering if it would be of any use to develop a mixed-use zoning that neighborhoods, like some of the communities in Leightonville, expressed a need to do cultivation in areas where it's currently banned. And we said, well, you could petition the board. But I'm wondering if a mixed-use zoning of some sort that areas could apply for might be of use in this matter.
If I may, through the chair, several discussions came about by the board with regards to an overlay district. And so, what is happening right now is that the board asked that an RFP be put out. The county is considering, actually considered two consultants, is working with, with putting together a contract for one consultant to go out there and study these areas and look at these overlays, especially for the Leightonville area. So, it basically looks at exempt, I'll call it exception zones or overlays, which would look at the RR fives, the RR twos and so on districts. But again, this is something that the board has been going back and forth with, and it was decided that it would be best to bring a consultant onboard to determine whether or not it is an overlay, it isn't an overlay, and how it would be best treated. So, that is already in progress.
Okay.
Yes, on page fourteen, I kind of addressed this. Commissioner Ogilvy asked if creating a new zoning to allow cultivation required a general plan amendment. And Marilyn Hunt stated it would require a general plan amendment. So, that's that part of it. The other part of it is, and I've addressed this before, I remember to the previous consultant who was here. I have concerns about the county spending money for consultants when, you know, we've got states that have been through this, we have other areas that have been through this. And it seems to me, we're recreating work that's already been done. And I wonder if maybe looking at other counties and/or states, such as Colorado and Washington, who have been at this for two years, and I'm sure they've addressed these things. I have a concern about hiring consultants when these things have been addressed in other areas. So, perhaps my recommendation would be that, that the staff, and I know, Nash, you've been going through so many people, I certainly am sympathetic to that. But I just have a concern about spending this money on consultants when a lot of this has already been done in other areas.
Point well taken. The board wanted to look at a, at an overlay district. And one of the issues that has come up is, is it zoning, is it not zoning? And so far, the consultant that has been selected looked at it as a zoning issue, looked at it. And we've asked the questions, is it going to require a general plan amendment? Is it going to require a number of land use changes? And how is it going to affect the general plan and so on? So, these are issues that still need to be resolved. And I hear you, but again, one of the things that I'll note is that, yes, we've gone through a lot of staff. I basically have all junior staff. If it wasn't for Marilyn and I, the average tenure is six months in the department. So, I know Russ has been with us for quite a while, and he's picked up a lot of these projects, like the ag preserves and so on. But I basically have a lot of new people that are just starting out in their planning careers, or maybe this is their second job. And I've got people that have five or six years' experience and others that have six months. And that's what I'm dealing with right now. Robert Laporte, who recently left, was my up-and-coming SMARA planner, so he's gone now. So, I'm working with one of the new planners to, so I can create the SMARA resource in the office. I'll say one thing about this staff. It is very, staff is very energized and very enthusiastic. And it has been years since I've seen a staff like this that is a go-getter staff. They're brand-new. They're, like I said, they're new at this, but they're enthusiastic, and I'll give them a lot of credit, because they don't say no to anything. They want to try everything. They want to do everything. But it's going to take some time to bring them up to what I would call a journey level. So, until such time, we have to rely on outside consultants.
I appreciate that. Thank you for pointing that out. I know we've gotten off of the approval of the minutes. I'm sorry, but we kind of digress there. But is, do you know the reason there's such a turnover? Is it financial? For the most part?
You have counties to the south of us that are paying a lot more for the same type of work. And so, you're seeing, we're seeing a lot of competition. In fact, the individual that was to take the job in the coast as the code enforcement officer indicated that they took another position closer to home at much higher pay. So, I am finding that through our recruitment process, it is very difficult to try to find somebody here. In fact, the building inspectors that I mentioned that have started, brand-new, a lot of them don't have their certifications. We are working with them to get their certifications. It used to be that Butte College used to have a wonderful program up there to train people and get them certified and get them out the door to a public agency. Because of the recession, all these colleges basically wound down their programs. So, what we're doing is we're trying to train them in-house. And so, again, right now, Mike Oliphant is acting building official right now. And so, we're in the process of recruiting a building official. So, we are going to be experiencing that turnover. And I also know that Sonoma County, they just started their cannabis permitting program this week. And they're in the process of recruiting planners as well. So, and then, we're currently recruiting as well. In fact, we're trying to schedule interviews for planner twos to fill Robert Laporte's position over on the coast, and we'll see how that goes.
Did he go to Sonoma County, or do you know?
He went to San Francisco.
Madam Chair, if I may, this item is on the agenda as the minutes. I would suggest that if the commission wanted to get more in-depth on this issue, it might be more appropriate to bring it back on a future agenda.
So, I had a thought on the sunset, the sentence with a sunset clause. What if we replaced all with restricted?
I'm sorry, where are you guys?
The sentence just above the motion on page, what we were just talking about, page fifteen.
Sentence right above the motion. Sentence right above the motion.
The commission agreed they would like to, a sunset clause to remove cultivation from all restricted residential zonings.
That works.
Yes, it does.
Restricted.
Good job.
So actually, it wouldn't replace all. It would just include restricted.
Because the board already made their decision, so.
But I think that was our intent.
Yes, I think so, too.
So.
Somebody needs to move approval.
No more questions. I'll make a motion. I'll spend a second. He says, I didn't get a chance to make my motion before Steve seconded it.
I knew it was you.
I assume that was with the corrections.
All opposed, Deck.
No.
All in favor of approval of the minutes?
With the corrections.
With corrections.
Aye.
All opposed. And we could have a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor, Sam.
Aye.
Well, Madam Chair, you really know how to run a meeting.
Well, I give all credit to the staff. We'll have the items, and we can really whip along.